Cool.
Good.
There we go.
We're ready. Welcome to the July tenth, twenty twenty-three special meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission in conjunction with the City of Yelm Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment in general and then also today during our hearing on the Yelm joint plan will accept more. Public comment for that. My name is Eric Casino. I am the season's chair residing district two. We'll start introductions of the Thurston County Planning Commission. And then we'll move over to Chair Perez and the Yelm Planning Commission. So we'll start online to make sure that everybody's here. Commissioner Hanson, are you there?
Yes, Joel Hanson, District Three.
Commissioner Wheatley.
I'm District One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Derek Day, District One.
Bones Perez, Yelm Planning.
John Thompson, Yelm Planning Commission.
Bob Howard, Yelm Planning Commission.
Anne Warman, Yelm Planning Commission.
Richard Lumsdale, Yelm Planning Commission.
I'm Gary Cooper, Planning and Building Manager, City Yelm.
And I think we have Jerry on here from the Yelm Planning.
Jerry, Yelm Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. With that, has everybody had an opportunity?
Three one zero.
Also.
Oh, Commissioner Pestinger, I didn't see you there.
No problem. Kevin Pestinger, District One, Thurston Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. With that, has everybody had an opportunity to look over our agenda this evening? And if so, I'd entertain a motion.
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this evening. Do we want to do these votes separately or together?
You'll want to do both separately for the record.
All right. For the record, the Thurston County Planning Commission's motion to approve the agenda has been made and seconded. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Peckinger.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
I have your agenda is approved from Thurston County Planning Commission. Would like to do yours.
Yep. Commissioner Howard.
Hi.
Commissioner Egypt.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hi.
Commissioner Graber. Hope he is not here. Commissioner Warman.
Hi.
Commissioner Lumsdale.
Hi.
Chair Perez.
Are.
I believe that would be all of them. So that motion is also passed and the agenda is approved. With that, at this point, we would accept public comment not related to the Yelm joint plan. If there's anybody online that would like to address the planning commissions, please raise your hand. Not seeing anybody for that. And there's anybody in the boardroom that'd like to address the planning commissions? Looks like there's nobody in the boardroom either that would like to address us. With that, we'll move on to. We will take a. Small break until seven o'clock to reconvene for our public hearing. Everybody back at seven o'clock.
I'm not too worried about it.
Yeah, so positive recording that.
I'll go check on the broad on the home run.
Yeah, you can check on the home run here. Welcome back to the July ten special meeting of Thurston County Planning Commission with our guest, the City of Yelm Planning Commission. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on Comprehensive Plan Docket Item CPA One, City of Yelm and Thurston County Joint Plan. The joint plan is a component of both the Thurston County and the City of Yelm Comprehensive Plans. Joint plans allow the city and the county, along with the public, to create a mutual vision for the future of the urban growth area and provide a guide for development. There is a sign-in sheet at the entrance of the room if you wish to testify. And having said that, we also have the opportunity for the public to address the planning commissions via our online link. Each person will have three minutes to testify. Names will be called for oral testimony. When you hear your name. I will promote you to a panelist and you can, you'll have three minutes. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And we'll have a timer up to show you when your three-minute countdown is about there. So this hearing is now open and we will start with a staff presentation before we move on to public testimony.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Amelia Schwartz. I'm an associate planner with Thurston County Community Planning. As Chair Casino said, today we are here to hold a public hearing on a proposed repeal and replace of the City of Yelm and Thurston County Joint Plan. The City of Yelm and Thurston County Planning Commissions have held a previous work session on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, which is open to the public. Right notice of this public hearing is published in the Olympian on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. In addition, a webmail announcement was sent to the Community Planning Division's email listerv on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any press release was issued on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. A special meeting notice was issued on July thirty-third, twenty twenty-three. Thurston County Community Planning updated the website with all available documents being considered at this hearing. Prior to the release of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three legal notice. All right. So I can go ahead and do it. Or no, open up for comments.
We're going to take comments now? All right, we're going to open this up for public comment. If there is anybody in the boardroom that'd like to speak, even if you didn't sign in, we welcome your comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to our online guests. And if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we'll promote you and give you your three minutes. I don't believe we're going to have anybody providing public testimony today. All right, well, with that, this public hearing is now closed. We will move into a work session again with Planner Amelia Schwartz.
Now. Go ahead and share this phone. Hello again. We are here for the Yelm Joint Plan Update Work Session Two, now that we have held a public hearing. All right. Today for this work session, we're going to have a discussion on the previous commissioner requests. And public testimony and then move on to recommendation and next steps. So the joint plan is an element of both the city and the county comprehensive plans. The last adopted joint plan between the City of Yelm and Thurston County was in two thousand and six. The twenty twenty-three update is a full repeal and replace. And it is based off the twenty seventeen City of Yelm Comprehensive Plan, updated to align with current conditions and county policies. The purpose of the joint plan, it's a requirement of the Growth Management Act. It helps fulfill countywide planning policies, provides consistency and predictability for residents. And it aids in transitions when areas are annexed. Some of the goals here are to update the plan to include current conditions and maps. As well as align it with existing goals and policies within the city and county. So some updates from my last work session, the online open house, the ArcGIS Storymap, I added aerial imagery to the interactive map. That was a request. Within the joint plan draft itself, I've updated map one with an option for an additional map one A. And that will be on another slide to see what you guys think. The Draft Housing Action Plan for Yelm. For twenty twenty-three does contain an extensive demographic section from page forty, pages forty to forty-eight. But it does not differentiate by the UGA or city limits and county. Existing TRPC and census data also do not differentiate demographic data by the young UGA for idyllic comparison. Though current geographical limits to the existing data do not make this a possibility for this update for potential in the future. So this is an example of some of the great demographic data that's coming in the draft Yelm Housing Action Plan. But once again, it's not separated by UGA slash city limits. Leave that up for just a second. And see some of the great visuals they've got coming. All right. And then this is the new map one and possible one A. I've, hopefully you guys can see that. Map one is the mostly white map. I've added a boulder symbology for the young UGA. As well as a dark red border outline and hopefully those are contrasting enough colors as well as an inset map. To help people locate where this is in the county if they aren't familiar. And then this possible one A map to the side is an aerial imagery map. Similar information, just with an aerial imagery base map, if that's something both commissions are interested in putting into the draft plan. All right. Another request for information was a reference to the City of Yelm and the county zoning in one map together. So this is just going to be a reference map, not going to go into the joint plan. The joint plan draft does contain UGA-related map. And that's going to show the potential post-annexation zoning. And then we've got more digital maps available on Thurston County GeoData. I can leave this up for a second for the Commissioners who are interested in seeing it. All right.
What, what is it? Sorry, what was MPC? I was trying to under, the purp, the light purple? MP.
That's our plan community.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right. As of today, July tenth, we have received three comments. Comment one was on Alder Lake, which is outside of the Yelm UGA. Then comment two has requested more open natural spaces. And comment three has requested to add a reference to the agricultural lands south of the UGA. So for comment one, while it is outside of the, the Yelm UGA, there are potential opportunities for regional collaboration. And we do have some related policies on. For regional collaboration in regards to flood mitigation and water practices. And those are in the Environmental Protection and Critical Areas Chapter, I believe. And then we also have some on page fourteen and forty-three. Then comment number two, the request for more open and natural spaces. So I've got, well, we have some policies in the Parks Chapter and the county has programs outside of the joint plan. That conserve lands through conservation features and open space programs. So we hopefully address that with a couple of the policies that we've got in the draft plan, as well as some other practices that the county has. And then number three that came in today, they requested to add a reference to the agricultural lands south of the UGA. Where we have a description of the general area of the young UGA. They wanted to add a line that noted the agricultural lands to the south, like the young UGA, to go along with everything else that's describing the area. And we do also have several ag policies. Throughout the plan, but we can certainly address that if we want to. All right. So next steps is hope to move to recommend adoption of the City of Yelm and Thurston County Joint Plan by repeal and replace. After that, it will be going to the Yelm City Council for review and I will be starting the SEPA process for environmental review. But right now, we can talk about map one A, potential changes, edits, any discussion of the comments.
Do we have anybody that would like to do a discussion on map one A? Commissioner Wheatley, did you have your hand up on? Everybody's, oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Is map one A meant to be included in this package or not?
Not yet. I wanted to see if you guys wanted it.
Oh, I see.
And if.
I see.
Both commissions want it, I'm happy to put it in. But if it just seems extraneous.
Map one was in there.
Yes, map one is in there. The mostly white map is already in the draft plan. And then the map with the aerial imagery is an option, should you guys want to pursue that.
Commissioner Wheatley?
So yeah, I, I do support that option. I think for most people, they get a lot more information from an aerial than. Than the other one. So it makes more sense for most folks.
Well, I would, I would agree.
I don't think there's any heartburn in putting it in, is there?
Okay.
If you could, I'd be great.
So is that?
Or making majority thumbs up? Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner Wheatley?
So if we're moving on to the next one. Uh, the open space, I just like a little more, uh, because I didn't really get a cha, I was. You know, not able to look at the new stuff this, this afternoon because I, I was not at home to look at it. Could you talk a little bit about whether the revision? How it changes the language about open space compared to the original version? Like. Is there, is there room to improve that language in order to? Address the concerns about having more open space that, that were raised in the public comment?
Yeah, let me see. That'll be.
Full four?
So.
And I'm especially wondering. You know, it's opening up a can of worms now, but. There were the changes, you know, there are coming changes to. Urban. Cop planning from this most recent legislative session, there's a whole bunch of language about. Climate. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't take the time. Uh, to see if any of that could be easily slid into this, you know?
That is planned on a large scale for the Thurston twenty forty-five update.
So the Yelm plan will be revisited. By the City of Yelm for its twenty forty-five update?
I'm not sure what the City of Yelm will be doing, but Thurston County will be addressing the. Updates to climate and the, as dictated by the recent legislation within Thurston twenty forty-five.
But will that include this UGA at that point? Okay.
Okay. And then. I have.
Just, just a point on, I was reading what she wrote. Which was kind of interesting because first of all, we're looking at Yelm as a small. Space. And she wrote the following, "To create a protected area for people to enjoy natural and endangered wildlife." Example is Zen Garden, a reserve, or a protected park where deer would be and everything else. And that would be excellent for the Thurston County Master Plan. But we keep the deer and the mountain lions inside the city of Yelm, where people can come and observe them. I'm not sure. She might have been addressing that thinking of all Thurston County, not necessarily the city limits of Yelm, because. Being a very small city we are, they have a wildlife reserve in the center of Yelm. It's inconceivable to me how you do it, other than for squirrels.
But if I might have to, that properly speaking, any open space requirements post-annexation would have to go into the city adopted plan and not so much the county adopted plan.
So.
Can I add something as well?
Amelia, if you don't mind.
Map three on page twenty-two, which shows what we're calling the future zoning after annexation by the City of Elm, Yelm. We have two large areas that are parks designated, uh, zones for parks and open space. They're not going to be wildlife-rented.
No, they certainly opens.
But they are, they've already been identified as having a lot of critical areas and wetlands and other habitats. And so once those are annexed, they will be maintained as an open space environment.
And, and with, within the current.
Probably ten percent of our city.
Yeah. The city limits today have a number of. Open spaces that are wetlands that are, there's no building, even if it's. You know, they have a, an R six designation, but you can't build on it because it's. Wetlands.
Well, you do have Cochran Park, which also does have. It's our recycling water site, but it includes ducks, fish, frogs. All kinds of critters, mosquitoes, the frogs. But I mean, it is a. A natural environment and you have ducks year-round there, wild ducks. And so there is that. Spot there that we do have.
Well, and also in, in the planning and parks and recreation section on page forty-one and forty-two, it seems to address the, the open space of parks quite, it's quite extensively pretty well.
Goal one, policy one point four, goal three, goal four, and then. Earlier on, on page seventeen of the plan as well, we've got a few different ones that address.
It seems like we've. It's been covered, it seems to me.
Yeah. Commissioner Wheatley, did you have more on that?
No, except maybe to clarify. So I think. It's going to be up, after this, it's going to be up to the City of Yelm to figure out how the climate mitigation, the new climate mitigation language that's just been put into. The GMA. Is going to apply to the twenty forty-five. Uh, plan update. And you know, I guess I'd like to alert. Our. Our young folks here that, that that language exists and. You know, I, I'm not in a position to sort of review it real quickly, but be aware that there are some pretty significant. Language about climate change now, and it's going to be worth taking a look at in this context, once it's kind of out of Thurston County's hands.
So we are well aware of that. We just were. Right toward the end of executing a contract for our twenty forty-five update with the consultant. And the very first thing we do is scrub all the new legislation. So there will be a climate section in our comp plan.
All right. So, um, does anybody else have anything else on Parks and Recreation section of the joint plan? Or?
Yeah. Oh, I would add one more thing if I could. Another thing that we're doing, so you know, none of these efforts are standalone efforts. So we're doing what Thurston County recently did, which is a habitat conservation plan. Looking at obviously primarily at pocket gopher, but a few other species as well. And out of that, there will emerge a number of changes probably to our permitting processes. Our, our planning for habitat and other things. And those things too, as we do our comp plan update, will all be folded in together. So we've got some other things on the front for protecting habitats.
All right. That's good to hear. Yeah, I guess we can move on to the next portion of this. And we're a little bit out of order. We could take these in order or go through them one by one, or we could just hit the major themes that anybody has questions on. If anybody. Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley?
Well, just on the, on the, I mean, I, I guess I just wanted to say I supported Loretta Sepinens. Suggested sentence too. If nobody else has, has trouble with that, I'd like to ask, would that be incorporated? About recognizing ag land in the.
Top of the UGA?
Yeah.
I don't, how would we even recognize that in this plan?
So Loretta had a, a helpful idea. It was actually put it in the start of the plan, I believe it was. Ten maybe, where I'm doing a description of the general area. I talked about the Niskewee lands nearby, JBLM. And I could definitely add that, so where it's joint plan area, page ten. And it talks about the young UGA, how much space it takes up, over two thousand acres. And what it's located near. So that is something we could address. We do have some policies on agriculture that it could relate to. That was Loretta's main comment. Doesn't actually change any policies, but it does add recognition that the young UGA is not. Separate from agriculture.
And the joint plan can cover more than just the UGA and the city?
No, the joint plan just covers the UGA. This section, the joint plan area is just a description.
So the joint plan and the joint plan area aren't necessarily the same area?
They are, the UGA. And so what Loretta is discussing is outside of the UGA, but in the general. In the vicinity. How about that's a better word? Thank you.
So we can make reference to these ag lands in the south of the UGA as being adjacent to, but not part of the joint plan area?
Yes, within that, that section on page ten, because that's also where we talk about JBLM, which is totally not in.
I, I see the section where it would go in and I would have no heartburn over doing that. In fact, I think that'd be a, a really good idea. If the rest of the planning commission has opinions on this, now's the time to voice them.
You want to see if we have a majority opinion on this?
You guys mind?
It seems appropriate to put it right there. Seems like.
Okay.
Option. All right. I'll make sure to add something.
Mr. Chair, so the person online has raised their hand. We tried to contact him a couple of times and he has not answered us in either place.
Who?
The person online, Mr. Howard Glassdatter.
Oh, Howard hasn't been able to get through?
I guess he might have had some difficulties getting in and we tried to ask him if he was the person at difficulty earlier. So.
Uh huh.
Did you want to check with him online before we proceed or?
Uh, if, if Mr. Glassdatter has something to say, I'd like to hear what it is.
Okay.
Um, I don't know how to get ahold of him.
Well, we can promote him and I think he's still in the Zoom and we can promote him in the Zoom.
Just like we would have done public testimony?
If you'd like.
Yes, I, I, I would like to hear from Mr. Glassdatter. And if, if we could promote him and give him up to three minutes, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
Mr. Glassdatter, are you there?
And Tosh, did you promote him yet? You did?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sorry, my, my picture disappeared. You know, I just wanted to comment on the, the, the letter I wrote. About Alder Lake Dam. Alder Lake Dam influences the whole valley. And there are ways that they can mitigate the flood, any flood. Um, that. Is of no, well, it's just like the letter I wrote. It would not cause them any expense. It would add a huge measure of safety to the valley. And. It's a little frustrating for me because everybody says they're outside the jurisdiction. It's not in Thurston County's jurisdiction, even though Thurston County gets the. The bulk of the floods that occur from Alder Lake Dam. And Alder Dam has no. Flood mitigation responsibility in their license. Uh, there, uh, they can have the dam two feet from capacity. And a storm in the forecast and it's up to them to do whatever they want. Um, they're, they're certainly know how to operate the dam. I complained about the twenty twenty flood that hit the lower valley. Uh, to, to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and. Basically, they said they followed their license and I complained that they didn't follow, the, the, the license was the problem. It wasn't following it or not following it. And I said, if you want to be concerned about following your license. They. Did not, uh, they have a license that says they're supposed to stay ten, no lower than ten feet below capacity in the summer, between. Um, Memorial Day and Labor Day. And as a, as a. Standard, that, that they've gone anywhere from fifty to seventy feet below capacity by Labor Day. And when I mentioned that, surprised the last four. Summers, they've been pretty close to. Meeting that goal every summer, whereas they had. meeting that goal every summer, whereas they hadn't before. So evidently FERC gone on their case. But they, they can very easily offer a high modicum of safety to of people below the dam. And they, I don't understand why they don't do it. It wouldn't cost them a dime if you read what I wrote carefully. Yes.
Um, yeah, I, I saw your letter and it, it says that um Tacoma, is it Tacoma P U D that that manages?
Yeah.
Have, have you, have you taken this to the Thurston County P U D? Like maybe they um they might have a, an ability to raise it in the context of good P U D behavior?
Yeah, well, I've been on the flood mitigation plan for Thurston County for the last couple of, for the last decade anyway.
And Mr. Glassetter, I, I hate to interrupt you, but um, I'm not sure how, how trying to get a change in the FERC permit for the
Well, I'm just saying that, that it is something that I think is important to Yom and important to Niskewee Valley. And yet, uh, everybody just looks the other way.
You have a suggestion on how that could be put into the joint plan?
Um, we wouldn't necessarily have something on the Alder Lake Jam in the joint plan. We will take this comment and pass it on to Thurston County Emergency Management. And it is something that we address in our flood regulations and also our flood hazard mitigation plan for Thurston County. We have updated and just so the planning commission knows Thurston County is a community rating system class two community, which is one of the highest ratings, is only about eight in the country. So we do have top-notch flood regulations in Thurston County. And Thurston County Emergency Management works really closely with Tacoma Power when they do have emergency operations and they do work with them. And we do check what they're, that they did their drills and all that as part of our C I R, C R S updates.
So there's not really a, a, a place to do anything on this in the Yom joint plan?
I'm not necessarily for Alder Lake Dam, but the city, of course, would be required to as part of the National Flood Insurance Program, keep their flood regulations up to date, just like Thurston County does, as part of the NFIP program.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Thurston County is doing this year. I, uh, I'm suspicious that they aren't doing as much as they have in the past. But Pierce County seems to be. But um, we'll see what happens.
Thank you very much, Mr.
FEMA came through and they said uh we will judge the dam as always full. And so that's why FEMA
Howard, Howard, you were given three minutes as part of the public hearing process. I believe your three minutes is over, if I'm not mistaken.
Alright, well, thank you for the opportunity anyway, so.
Thank you, sir.
One point of clarification, and that is it's not operated by the Public Utility District. It's not a department within the city of Tacoma that operates.
Well, let's get back to joint plan stuff. We can. Does anybody have anything on any of these other elements of this joint plan? We have looked at uh the Parks and Rec area concerning open space? If anybody had anything on uh, any of the other elements like land use? Or housing? Uh, Commissioner Passinger, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um so, my biggest concerns are about housing and water availability for housing. Um, however uh, on page seven, on the acknowledgements page, I believe Commissioner Carolina Mahia's name is spelled wrong. So just a request to correct that. Um, looking through the housing information, the population growth plans, um, expectations. You know, Yom is an incredibly fast, fast growing area of the county. Um, responsible for a huge amount of the future growth of the county. And relative to its size. And uh, the good news, it looks like, if I'm reading the, the housing section right, about available inventory for for land for building housing, is that there's actually excess capacity through twenty forty-five. If I read that correctly. Um, so if there's plenty of land to build housing, then to me, the two biggest questions are uh, around the topic of the broad range of diversity of housing to meet all economic needs. Including affordable housing. Um, which I don't see very much in there. I see references to, yeah, we should encourage this. But no specific details of how to encourage it. Um, and I see uh next to no information about how there's going to be any diversity of housing uh within the community. So um, is that something that, that has been thought about or discussed and is just not fully baked into this?
Do you have something?
I have something. Yeah, Gary Cooper, the planning and building manager at Yom. So we, again, like I said earlier, this is uh, none of these documents are really standalone. The city just adopted on June twenty-eighth, the Housing Action Plan. Which addresses, which establishes all kinds of goals and strategies to provide um all range of levels of affordability of housing. And we are working with the other cities in the county right now on a process to figure out how to allocate responsibilities for providing all those levels of housing. So the housing needs analysis that Amelia referenced earlier was the technical document that informed the Housing Action Plan. So we do have a very um, thorough, I guess, uh, plan for um, providing housing, uh, including the projections of our needs. How many, how many units will we need in twenty forty-five to uh, that will be affordable to people who make thirty percent of the average median income for the area, for example? And it gets to that level. So we do have that. Um, and so it'd be sitting right on.
Back on to here, thank you.
Oh, and if I might also add, we have to remember the joint plan has a holding zone of one unit for five acres for the U G A. Upon incorporation, it does change to that urban density zoning and the city's housing plan would then apply to that area once it's annexed.
Does anybody else have anything on the housing section?
Sorry, and did anyone have an answer to the question about the water element for housing?
No, Cody gave us those numbers last time. I, I can, um, actually, I asked my boss to be on, on um, sort of eighteen hundred.
Sorry, I thought you got eighteen hundred.
Well, I, we got several, we, once we got our water rights freed up last year, we got several years worth of water availability, but I can't remember what that number is. So I'll, I'll text Cody while you guys are talking and see.
He said till twenty thirty-five. Yeah.
I thought it was twenty thirty, but twenty thirty-five.
Twenty thirty.
Thank you.
Commissioner Passinger, is that all you had for housing?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have anything on housing? Or any other element of this joint plan? I think, I think that the commissions are running out of questions for staff. Which is probably a good thing.
Quick note, I will, if I autocorrect got me and put Caroline Mahia instead of Carolina. So I'll fix that. And if I catch any other issues, of course, those will be fixed, so if I catch them.
And the addition of the ag lands?
Yep, map one A, uh, the ag recognition sentence on page ten.
Well, if we don't have any further discussion on this, we could certainly entertain a motion about this joint plan, especially if we do have a draft motion up there, if anybody was interested in offering that from the Thurston County Planning Commission.
Right, I moved to recommend adoption of the city of Yom and Thurston County Joint Plans twenty twenty-three repeal and replace update.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to recommend adoption of the Yom and Thurston County Joint Plan twenty twenty-three by repeal and replace. With that, we'll call for the vote on the Thurston County side.
Fisher Hansen? Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hefinger? Vice Chair Dave?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
I thought motion passes unanimously. Uh, we don't actually need to take a vote from, do we need one from? Call for the vote for the city of Yom Planning Commission?
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner U G A?
Chair, aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Lowenstein?
Aye.
Chair Perez?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously by both commissions. Thank you very much, Amelia.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Chair Casino, so I do want to know, Tasha went back and checked the minutes from the last meeting we had, joint meeting we had. And we had twenty thirty-six, um, was what was in the meetings, meeting minutes from Cody and six to seven thousand homes for the water availability.
So good, good, that work, that's probably a huge relief for the city of Yom.
Yeah.
Alright, well, having finished up our uh public hearing and our work session, we're gonna move on to the next item of our agenda, which is for the good of the order, if anybody has anything for the good of the order. Being nothing and having no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks, folks. Thank you for your hospitality. Thanks for